One of the last opportunities to have some discussion before we set the public forum for the 26th of this month. So I actually have a lot of questions, but I've tried to narrow them down for a few. And if I could, please start off with Ms. Lisa Smith. You are always so amazing with making this money thing understandable, at least in a way that I can understand it. And some of the questions you've already shared the answers with me, but I will ask them again for our listening audience. It was perhaps about three weeks ago or a month ago, I did send you an email and I asked you what the total cost of the Parks and Recreation Bond was, with the understanding that forty-five million dollars was the portion of the bond, nine million from General Fund. But you gave me a very detailed description of the entire cost with the add-in and everything. Could you briefly go over that again and give us the total amount of the bond package, ma'am?
Well, let me just begin with that the total bond package itself is an amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars. That's the principal amount, just like you would acquire a home, you would make that decision based on the cost of the home and then ultimately the interest rate as well. For the scenario that we used, we did estimate five percent interest costs on the forty-five million. That would be split into three issuances. That's an interest rate that we don't expect to incur. However, for conservative scenario that we developed, we did use five percent. You would then also have the cost of the bond referendum with legal fees. That's about one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. And then the educational campaign is seventy-four thousand roughly.
So ma'am, when you add up the forty-five million plus that five percent borrowing cost and all of the fees, I think the figure, the total figure that you gave me was something like eighty-three million dollars?
Well, I think in my response, I didn't address the pay-as-you-go, so it would be about nine-point-seven million less than that. The interest cost is estimated at about twenty-nine million, however, that's over the course of the life of the bonds. And, but again, what the voters would be voting on is the forty-five million. Again, just like you would have a house, you make that decision based on the principal amount, the cost of the home, and the cost of this bond package in terms of what you're borrowing.
So I kind of liken this to, I do a little bit of real estate and we always have to give a good faith estimate. When you buy this house, at the end of your twenty-year mortgage, or thirty-year mortgage, whatever it might be, that this hundred-thousand-dollar house is going to cost you three-hundred-and-fifty, that would, I mean, by law, you have to do that. So that is what I am asking you, even though it is over the twenty-year period, when all is said and done with our conservative estimate of the five percent. I believe the number was eighty-three. If that has changed, when we, when we package this up, what is it going to cost the taxpayers at the end of twenty years, your best good faith estimate?
Well, the numbers I provided, that that related to the borrowing.
Yes.
Not the pay-as-you-go.
Okay.
So the principal amount of forty-five million and the estimated interest cost at five percent, again, that's what we estimate would be worst-case.
Okay.
Planning for, would be about twenty-nine million. So those two numbers combined is about seventy-four million.
Okay, so then that's seventy-four million, and then we have a nine-million-dollar, I guess you can say, transfer from the General Fund?
It would, it would be cash-funded.
Cash.
At about nine-point-seven million.
So when you say cash-funded, does that mean that, so every year of the twenty years, we're taking a little bit of cash out, or?
It would mean that there are some projects in the early years of the plan that we would pay for in cash. We would not borrow the money to pay for.
Okay, so we take the forty-five million plus the twenty, what, the borrowing cost?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine million, I'm bad with math, fourteen, so that's seventy-four million. And then we add the cash money of the nine-million dollars, if you ever take a little bit, so that, that's where I get that eighty-three million dollars from. Okay, that, that's good. A question about General Fund, this nine-million dollars that will be cash-funded. Can you explain to our audience what the General Fund is? And if we're going to put like the nine-million dollars for this project, what other uses could, you know, we use the General Fund money for? For example, could, could General Fund money be used for lights, sidewalks, substations? Is that something that the City Council directs? If you could give that explanation of what, where the money comes from for the General Fund and how we use it?
Okay. The General Fund is the main operating fund of the city, like you would have a main checking account to pay all of your primary bills out of. That's what the General Fund is to the city. This plan would take the nine million as a part of that, two-point-two-five percent, two-point-two-five cent proposed tax increase that we have shared with the public. A portion of those proceeds would be used to pay for, I think, just about all, if not all, of those projects. It's certainly council's decision as to how you spend any of the General Fund resources that you have available to you, whether it be, if it's annual revenues coming in, operating, or capital costs, whatever you would identify that for.
We could be used more. When I asked for the, for the information that you gave me a few weeks ago, can I assume that when you all were working through the numbers, that this total amount was known months, months, months ago, when you started discussing how we were going to finance the bond package?
When you develop a scenario, yes. I mean, we, we project that out, but I think in terms of when you identify the projects and how they're going to be funded, you speak to the amount that you're borrowing. I think that is what's traditionally identified when you're going through a financing plan, just like we would do with the capital improvement. We would have a number of projects, some of which are financed, some are pay-as-you-go. We talk about the cost of the project themselves in terms of the construction costs and related.
So I would say that a month ago that you gave this to me, this eighty-three million dollars was known because we were already talking, because that was the first time I ever heard the total amount, so would you?
We had developed this scenario previously, yes.
Previously, to you, me asking you for it and you providing it. Okay, thank you, ma'am. If I could, Mr. Gibson, sir. You two are amazing and have done a great job at fielding so many questions from us, from the council.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council.
Yes, sir.
Last Monday night, I know we, when we originally voted for this, we split the vote, we had several scenarios, several meetings, and we kind of tried to tweak packages and we kind of talked locations of projects. Last Monday, at our work session, we discussed moving, I believe it was the tennis complex to Shaw Heights.
And the sports complex.
And the sports complex to Shaw Heights. Now, I may be remiss, but that was the first time I had heard of that switch to Shaw Heights. And, and as a result of that, I don't think we've done that in a public meeting as this. And many people were surprised by the headlines that The Observer carried, saying that Shaw Heights was now an option. So in that presentation, we talked about acquiring properties, the possibility of using eminent domain to get the thing, you know, gather the properties together. Can you give an overview of that decision to make that an option for the sports complex?
Well, if you remember, when we first started sort of hammering it out, we had a couple of work sessions.
Yes, sir.
And in that work session, one of the council members brought up the fact that 295 was there and could we use that new avenue as a way to generate economic impact? And they wanted to explore some PWC property that they had over there. So we went and did that. And when that didn't sort of pan out, because it was so difficult, the terrain was so difficult, it was asked that we look at any other area near the 295 bypass. And then that's where Shaw Heights came up, so we did a scenario and brought that back to council.
Okay, so when you say, "We did a scenario," when you had this discussion about, when we found out that the primary location, I believe it was council member, Mayor Protemar, that may have suggested a location, when we found that was a bust and that wasn't going to work, how did we get there? I'm specifically asking about what meetings took place, who attended those meetings. Quite often, I'm more interested in the discussion that leads to a decision than, you know, just the decision itself, because I didn't get any, I didn't know that we were turning our attention to that. And the very first time I heard it was at our work session. So can you describe the meetings that took place, who attended them, and how we got to this decision?
There, there wasn't any meeting that took place. It was just, would it be better here, or could we do it at this site, since the terrain was so much different? It was a lot flatter. And I said, "Well, we'll look at it, we'll go back to our landscape architect and see if he can put something together, the amount of property that it would take to bring the sports center and the tennis center to that area."
Who is the "we"?
Ms. McDonald, or someone's raised, has got a light here, let me see what this is about. I'm sorry, is that the manager or the attorney?
That's me, mayor. And I've just been informed that if we look back at the motion for this site, in the original motion, apparently there was some direction that we look at alternate sites.
Okay, so I'm saying, who is the "we"? That's what I'm trying to get to. You said, "We decided." Who is the "we"?
Well, the management asked, asked us to look to it, to the alternative sites in that area, and the City Council, I mean, not City Council, but City Management.
How many properties to make this work in Shaw Heights? How many, you mentioned in our work session, something about eminent domain, some of the properties may be available and, you know, maybe some are not. Tell us what that looks like. How many properties are, may require the use of eminent domain to package that up? Because I know we have something like with the Hope Six, we're kind of stuck in a bind right now, where we've decided perhaps not eminent domain. How many properties are we looking at trying to gather?
Now, I don't know how many properties we're trying to gather, and I didn't mention eminent domain in that work session.
No, I didn't.
But in order to do the tennis complex and the sports center, you'd take roughly a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty-five acres.
Hundred-and-twenty-five.
With park and everything.
Can someone perhaps, Mr. Voorhees, was eminent domain mentioned at all in our work session?
Is the, which work session, the one, the most recent one, where we discussed Shaw Heights option?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it was.
Can someone, that's what I'm trying to get to, that eminent domain that was discussed regarding Shaw Heights.
And the way it was introduced was that one of the barriers to successful redevelopment in the Shaw Heights area is the fact that there's so many parcels, in particular, many, many parcels owned by absentee landlords. And so the, the way I recall it being designed was that we would certainly make the first effort to purchase straight up with property owners through a negotiated sale. But in the event that we're unable to determine ownership, because there's heirs' properties, or not be able to locate or contact the owner, get any response, that we would have the ability to use condemnation. And that it's likely that, given how many parcels were there, and how many absentee landlords and heirs' properties there were, that it, it would be unlikely for a private sector developer to be able to, to gain site control. It would really probably take a public entity to be able to use eminent domain to consolidate all this property.
If we found ourselves, whether we were able to purchase them all outright, or having to utilize, excuse me, eminent domain, what sort of timeframe would, would we know where we stand? What sort of expectation of timeframe to pull those pieces together?
I hesitate to, to say without actually plotting it out on a, on a calendar, because there's so many properties, it would, it would take, take a while to consolidate.
Would you say it would be before next week of our public hearing?
That I could predict and not allow for?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't happen.
I mean, that's a pretty quick, quick turnaround. We could take a stab at it, it's not prior practice, but this is a bit of a unique situation.
So this is set to go to ballot in February. We're at November now. Would we, whoever's planning this, would we have expectations that we would have a clear path before the voters go to the polls to vote for this, whether or not this is a location that the sports complex would be going in? Or would we foresee this probably still dangling before February, the ballot?
I think it's the intent of the staff to stick with this site. After the due diligence we've done so far, we think it's a valid location. What I'm saying is that I wouldn't, sitting here today, be able to give you a good estimate of the amount of time it would take the staff to conduct property acquisition. But given the length, the time of the overall program of work, I would imagine that the property acquisition could be completed on a timeline that's reasonable relative to the scope of the project.
I guess what, and we'll move on, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is, next week is a public, or the 26th would be a public forum. And if citizens are going to come down and speak knowledgeably about it, perhaps they would like to have some sort of idea of where these projects will go. Because as we see with the Hope Six, we've run into a stumbling block where we have not acquired all the property. So we have people perhaps voting in February and the location is really not been determined. That's what, that was just my, my thought process through that, but I'll, I'll let that go. When we talked about doing our pools, we said that we have a city of over two-hundred-thousand or so with one pool, which is at Smith Recreation Center. When we count our population, do we count Fort Bragg?
Do, in our population count, yes.
We do count Fort Bragg. So we have two-hundred-plus-thousand people with access to one pool, which is Smith.
Two-hundred, yes, the 2010 census, yes.
If we're counting the population at Fort Bragg, did we consider the fact that I believe that Fort Bragg has four outdoor pools and two indoor year-round pools that are pretty much accessible? This is a military community. So when you, did you take into account those four pools and the two indoor pools that the same population you counted into our two-hundred-and-eight-thousand have access to? Was that part of your planning?
No, ma'am. What we did was, we took the 2010 census and the numbers that are in the zip codes from 28311, 28303, 305, 06, 04, and 14.
Okay, but we're counting Fort Bragg's population?
Right.
And Fort, Fort Bragg's population has access to six pools on posts?
Well, the, the one thing that, that I was looking at as a Parks and Recreation Director was access.
Okay.
On to Fort Bragg, which is, you know, very difficult for populations to get to those areas. And we wanted to put them in that, that service area of being three miles away from the nearest aquatic center.
And, and I understand that, but I'm just trying to get back at the numbers. The truth of the matter is, if you're going to count the two-hundred-and-eight, if you're going to count Fort Bragg in our population, what was that, thirty-thousand or so, Fort Bragg?
I didn't, I didn't, I don't know exactly how much people. What I do know is only fifteen, fifteen percent of the enlisted people live on base. Eighty-five percent live in the city or in the county. I, I knew those numbers. But when you look at the 2010 census, based on populations in the zip codes, that's what I was basing it on, on our regular recreational service area.
So with the fifteen percent that live off-base, I, I'm.
On-base.
On-base, I'm retired and I go on Fort Bragg the majority of the time, not just for pools, but for everything else. So that was just my ratio that we were saying, with two-hundred-and-eight-thousand citizens, that we have access to one pool.
Right.
But of that two-hundred-and-eight-thousand, about thirty-thousand or so do have access to Fort Bragg. So the ratio that we are running on perhaps is not as accurate as it could be, because if we did count it, we would say that the citizens in this community have access to seven pools.
Let me ask you a question. When you say thirty-thousand, you're talking about thirty-thousand people who have military ID to get on posts?
I'm talking about the population that, when we annexed Fort Bragg, that we were able to add into our population to get over that magical two-hundred-thousand.
Right.
But I, I can see that you said you did not include that.
No, no, we did not include those seven pools.
Just a few more questions for you, sir. I, I pulled the wrong package. I didn't bring the right one that I wanted, but in the previous package, it had, I'm talking cost, our aquatic center that I guess is proposed in Mazar Park.
Yes.
I remember reading an amount, fees, for a family of four, for a family of four to buy an annual pass for our twenty-seven-million-dollar aquatic center. What is the cost of an annual pass for a family of four?
Oh, I don't have, I didn't bring that with me now, the number.
Does six-hundred dollars ring a bell?
It, it could be that number now, but I, I know, I don't have that number right here with me.
Six-hundred dollars.
Okay.
Six-hundred dollars. With that sort of cost, I'm wondering, because I know in other parts of our Parks and Rec, when we have children that can't afford to play intramural sports, we find a way to subsidize it or give it free.
Well, there's a, there's a form that they fill out, they have to bring the documentation, and we normally cut those fees in half, depending on the documentation.
Those same children that can't afford to play basketball or football, do we intend on cutting the fees in half for access to our?
Oh, of course.
Is that included in your revenue projections?
It's, it's not depending on the number of kids that, that we would have to participate, which that is not a high number. So just say like a child came up and they wanted to go into the aquatic center, and they go over to Seabrook now and they pay a dollar. If, if they were to bring documentation, then we would cut that to fifty cents, depending on the documentation that they brought.
So if there's a family of four, that, on, the regular on-the-street price is six-hundred dollars.
Right.
So I have three children and I'm the same family that can't afford to have my child pay to play basketball, what price are you going to offer me for my annual pass?
What, what we would do is, we cut fifty percent right now. So depending on what the fees are set when we come back to council, then it would be three-hundred dollars.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
So how many of those three-hundred-dollar passes are we going to be able to give and still meet your revenue projections?
I don't know that. I don't know. I don't know. Depending on what we do right now in the city, we don't do that many of them, so I couldn't tell you based on, on those numbers right now.
Okay, so I, I have just one last question I forgot to ask about Shaw Heights, and this is a question from a citizen. Ms. Applewhite, why are we putting an athletic facility, tennis courts in Shaw Heights, proposing to do that? That is not currently part of the city and that the Cumberland County Commissioners decided not to go in and help pay for this Parks and Rec Bond? I'm a taxpayer, and if I'm going to pay for something, I want it in the city limits, I think. So, and they're listening tonight. So what is, what is, what is the response to a citizen that says, "The city of Fayetteville has decided to go this alone, and we're going to put a significant portion of this Parks and Rec Bond in the county, and the county is not paying for this." What's your answer to them?
I, I would think that before that decision is made, that we would definitely look at it being in the city. I would think that would be something we would do.
Mr. Voorhees, do you have a, speak to that, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's the intent of the city to annex that property once it's acquired by the city, and that's something we can do regardless of the annexation laws. We would own, own the property. But I would also add that even if we didn't, it is a doughnut hole completely surrounded by the city, so it's accessible to city residents. That's why, why it's a good location, but we would annex it.
Good point, Mr. Voorhees, because many people have asked why we haven't annexed Shaw Heights for many, many years. But now that we decide to put a tennis court in there, now we're interested in annexing it. So you, you did, actually made my point. But that is a question from, from a citizen, so that's all I have.
We don't have the ability to annex it now.
Yes, sir.
If we owned it, we could.
I understand the annexation laws. Thank you.
Those were good questions, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dor, I'm sorry, ma'am.
I, I just had for Mr. Bauer next, if you want to.
No, no, that's fine, we'll finish yours, and then we've got some other council members with questions.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Bauer, how are you?
Well, give me now.
Just got a couple of questions for you. In terms of our education outreach program for our citizens, Ms. Smith, I think I wrote my note, in terms of our budgets, it's, what's our budget for our education outreach?
About seventy-four million dollars.
Next.
Sorry, that was intense. Yeah, four-thousand.
Seventy-four thousand dollars, okay. Seventy-four thousand dollars is our community outreach. I know that probably about two months ago, you and I had a couple of exchanges about our video online, and that cost us about six, seven thousand? How much was that video?
Actually, I think it was about forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred dollars, so five grand. So leaves us about, you know, sixty thousand plus. At the time, I had asked, what was the plan for educating our citizens on this Parks and Rec Bond? And, and at that time, we had only done a video. And, and I think your reply was something like, you kind of structured it, but you kind of reserved the rights to move the money around as we needed. So with just two weeks or so away from a public forum, and two months or so away from actual voting, what is the plan to spend the remainder of this seventy-four thousand dollars? And when will that plan be executed? I hope we have a plan by now.
Oh, we do, ma'am. I didn't bring it tonight, I apologize, but I can give you a rough estimate of what we're going to spend those monies on.
Please, sir.
And we've been spending, as you said, we created some educational materials. Most of the materials are available on our website, so we encourage the public to go to our website and take a look at the materials we put together to help them understand what the bond issue is and what projects are included. So that information is available. We also have an intern that's been working with us on putting together community meetings, and Michael and myself, mostly Michael, has been going out to several meetings with community groups to help them understand what's being proposed. And that's the chief efforts that we've been engaged in for the last three to four months, expanding with the staff and the creation of the brochures and the printing, et cetera, about a little over a third, almost, almost a bit short of half of the money we have available so far. Now, I've been moving forward in the next couple of months to actually do some media buys in January and February. Been looking at doing a commercial and some, we're looking at potentially doing direct mail, but we're not sure whether we're going to do that or not. Really depends on whether we can actually do that at a reasonable cost. We'll also be looking at some billboards and some other signage to try and get people aware that there is a ballot measure on the 26th and that they have an opportunity to vote.
So is, is this money being spent to make sure people know that there is going to be a ballot measure, or educating them on the projects and the cost of the bond? I, I was under assumption it would be both?
Both. Of course, there's limited things you can do in a billboard. So we're really trying to make sure that people are aware of it, and then drive them to the website and other sources of information where they can get more detail and become more educated about what the decision is that's before them.
Okay, so there was an email sent, and I'm going to wrap this up, I know we have a long evening, or we can move this forward, but there was an email sent to the entire council, and we all got it and said, "I was wondering if the true cost of the future Parks and Rec Bonds and Rec Plan will be published in the newspaper, because we're going to be voting for or against it in 2013." Little's been said about the true cost, the expense of running it, personnel, equipment, security, support, vehicles, user fees, increasing taxes due to reevaluation, blah, 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 blah. There are a lot of questions. So what I'm trying to get at is, what are we going to do to answer this gentleman's question, other than a commercial and, and telling people to go to our website? Because that has been the response that I've been given, telling people to go to our website or call Parks and Rec. It doesn't seem like we're doing enough, and that is the reason why I was interested in what sort of educational materials, but I guess that's forthcoming.
Educational materials are pretty much done, council member. The, the frame of the PowerPoint that we've put together, the video, the written materials, and the website material, those, that's the material that we've put together. We also have longer reports, the analysis that was done and presented to council earlier, which goes through and actually talks about the operational costs and the design, the specification of the projects. That's all available on our website. And I think the answer to almost every one of those questions is available. And I think the answer to almost every one of those questions is available in our online materials.
Okay. Last question, in your educational meetings, your community meetings, um, I've gotten a lot, some feedback from some of them, from the CCCU to friends of the library to, you know, various ones. And they have this eighty-three million dollars? The all-in costs at your meetings that you and Mr. Gibson have gone to, are we telling people the good faith estimate of the eighty-three million or the fifty-four million? Because many people are surprised when I say eighty-three million. What have you been saying at the meetings?
We've been talking to them about the ballot measure that'll be in front of them, the authorization for the debt, the principal amount of up to forty-five million dollars. And then the total project cost estimate of fifty-three point five million dollars. That's what we've been disclosing.
Okay, so the eighty-three million dollars is not been discussed at your meetings?
No, it's not.
Why?
Because we don't think it's, um, the principle that they'll be asked to vote on to authorize the city to actually incur debt. The ballot measure before, we won't even talk about the fifty-three million dollars, they'll talk about forty-five. And I'll make sure they understand what they see when they step into the ballot booth and actually take a vote on this. And that's the number that actually by statute is identified as the amount of debt that's being authorized at forty-five.
So we understand what's legally by statute what's required. So I, I'm gonna ask this question, um, for our citizens who are gonna bear this amount. Are we saying that it's not important to say what the all-in price is, what they're really? Just like when you go to buy your car or you buy your home, you sit down and say, at the end of the day, if you really, really love this thing, you're gonna be paying X dollars for it. So you're saying that in all of your meetings throughout the community that we haven't talked about this all-in cost?
No, ma'am, I respectfully disagree that that's the relevant number to be focused on.
That's all I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Hirsch, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ms. Applewhite has stated five times eighty-three million dollars. And Mr. Bauer, if you'll come up front, I think I've heard you, Mr. Gibson, and Ms. Smith say on several occasions, and from past history projects that we have moved forward, the Franklin Street Parking Lot, for one excellent example, costs have been considered to be less because of construction cost and competition. And, um, these estimates have been very conservative. Is that the case?
That is the case. In fact, we've looked at costs of, of debt and recent bond issues, and the three to three and a half cents, or three and a half percent is what interest rate most bond issues have received in the last couple of months. So we do think that five percent is, uh, a conservative estimate. There will be an interest cost. And I don't think there's anybody out there who's, uh, looking at this issue, believes that there isn't gonna be an interest cost. We don't know what that amount will be. It'll depend on what the market bears at that time.
But the citizens on February twenty-sixth, they're voting on a general obligation bond of forty-five million, not eighty-three million, not a hundred and ten million, and not fifty-two million, but forty-five million dollars. Is that correct?
Up to that amount, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Bauer?
Uh, Mr. Bauer, it's probably probably well-known that I'm, I'm not one who had supported the, the bond issue, but, uh, having been in mortgage banking for a little while, I do understand good faith estimates. And it's, it's impossible to give a good faith estimate when you don't know what the interest rates are. You're basing your comments there on, uh, on, on an established interest rate when you're giving a good faith estimate. Um, and I would think that as far as the public is concerned, as far as it comes to a ballot, they need to know what will be on the ballot. And what will be on the ballot is the, is the, the total amount of the loan up to that, up to that value. Uh, I would be loath to have the city, uh, put a number of what the interest payments are gonna be on it, because it could be more and it could be less, based on whatever the interest rate is at the time each segment of the loan is, is, uh, is received. I happen to think that they, they probably, uh, if things continue the way they are, at some point in time, these low interest rates are gonna bust way up, and they're gonna bust up big. And so that's a possibility where we could be running to higher interest rates than we anticipate. And, uh, I wouldn't wanna put, uh, too low of a figure on it as well as too high a figure. So I, I don't know if I'm correct on that, but that's, uh, it seems to me the way that you have to look at it, that you simply are obligated to say what's the amount of money the city's gonna borrow, not necessarily what the city's gonna pay back.
That is exactly the requirement of state loans, for us to actually ask the community to authorize us to issue up to a specific amount of debt.
All right, sir. Mr. Art?
Mr. Gibson, can I get you to come back up? I wanna talk about the, um, the proposal for the Shaw Heights Recreation Center. Back when I proposed, uh, moving the location to the council at our work session, I, I did so because the, the forecasted location that you were working off was off of Fields Road, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and that location was based off a joint effort between the city and the county. And, uh, and that would have been a more central location for the county and the city, correct?
When, when the per, the property was purchased back about ten, twelve years ago.
Right, but once, once the county made a decision that they were going to withdraw from this effort, uh, that's when I, when I started to look around for a location more centrally located within the city. And, um, a- and, and I started looking at the, between the Bragg Boulevard, Merkison Road, Shaw Heights area because of the two ninety-five interchange. When you looked at, when, when, when you looked at the, the property on the west side of the, of the creek, if you will, that, that we originally discussed with the council that afternoon, PWC has a large watershed there, but there was still would be property that was gonna have to be acquired to, to compensate for the hundred and fifty acres you needed for the park?
Yeah, it, it's roughly about a hundred, hundred and twenty, a hundred to a hundred and twenty acres, and we would have had to borrow, uh, purchase some more property on the Bragg Boulevard, yes.
To, to get the full, the full softball, baseball, football, soccer, and tennis in that location? Uh, which is what we discussed that day. Um, when you, when you started looking, and by the way, my understanding, this was a staff initiative that you guys moved it to the east side of the creek to, to look at that?
Well, it was from the, uh, from city management, yes, what other areas would be preferable in that area.
And, uh, and so, so we, you started looking at that side, and, uh, but there's still an intent to, to access, it, it's still to be able to use the PWC watershed and, and to use that value of the two lakes that are on that property, uh, you know, for, you know, fishing or, or, uh, you know, some canoeing and, and those types of activities as well. It's like a nature trail, did I understand that that night?
Once we work it out with the council and they see that fit, then yes, we would go to PWC and ask, see if we could access their watershed.
Okay, and then based on your experience, and, and Mr. Voorhees, please, you can join in, from an economic development standpoint, two major corridors that we've been looking at have, have been Bragg Boulevard and Merkison Road, and how we can revitalize those areas. Based on your experience with parks and recreation and those types of things, does this help bring about economic revitalization to areas, uh, for example, like the Shaw Heights Donut Area that the city's overlooked for years?
From, from a recreation standpoint, having traffic in sports complex gives you tremendous economic impact. Um, being in that area where the accessibility is, is quicker, yes, it does for, for our sake, for Parks and Recs. Now, I don't, wouldn't know about economic development as far as the other thing.
Mr. Voorhees?
Uh, Mayor Protam, I would just add to that that, um, the proximity of interstate interchanges uh, to a major corridor is a very compelling economic development generator. Uh, so I, I would say that you put, um, two ninety-five interchange uh, with Bragg Boulevard, with Merkison Road corridor, coupled with a, a major recreation complex generating traffic. And we're gonna see things happen because the market wants them to happen. Uh, and, and I think we looked at that as a, an opportunity to leverage two economic development needs. And one is the Merkison Corridor, and the other is Shaw Heights.
So when you, you say generate traffic, um, that's based off of hosting, um, soccer and softball and baseball tournaments? Do, do you have any projections on what you think, you know, based on your initial? I mean, you, you, you're putting it together, an initial concept, but let, but let's say, you've, you've been up to Rocky Mount, I understand, and looked at their complex. Uh, twelve fields up there?
Yes, sir.
Um, how many teams do they average on the weekend?
Well, even, even to go back, not even to talk about Rocky Mount, but, uh, what we've been doing here in Fayetteville is hosting travel ball tournaments for the past year to get, to just to sort of dip our feet into the water, to understand what that looks like or how we handle that. Um, and we've been working with the, uh, CBB in doing that initiative. We've probably done about two million dollars in economic impact with just what we have. Uh, and not being as competitive as some of the Rocky Mounts, the Florenses, the, their Carries. So because we would have that accessibility, we see our numbers jumping up pretty high and being able to have a multi-complex in soccer and softball and baseball all at the same site, as well as the tennis, um, being able to, uh, show off, uh, a twenty-acre lake where people can have that fishing expedition as far as the walking. I think we compete real well on our regional market. So from that standpoint, we would definitely be a competitor.
So, so ba- based on that, that, um, capability, uh, it would bring, it would be bringing revenue, and it wouldn't make it a revenue-neutral facility?
Oh, I don't think so.
A- a- and, but that's, and that's not what you're proposing. But it, but it would be a revenue generator, not just for the park, but also for local, uh, local businesses in the area?
I would, I would think they would be interested in that taking place.
Hotels and restaurants and?
Yes.
And the convenience stores, those kind of things?
I think that generates revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Gibson?
The, um, economic impact study that y'all received from Rocky Mount, do you recall what it projected, the economic impact?
I, I don't, I don't have those numbers.
It was about eight point four million. How, how large is that facility?
They have twelve fields.
And how many would we be building?
We would be building eight fields of softball and baseball for youth and adult, plus we would be adding another seven fields just for soccer and football, and then adding the tennis center on that site.
By any measure, our facility would be even larger than Rocky Mount.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so if theirs is a little over eight million dollars, it'd be fair to say ours would likely be more than that?
I, I would think so.
Do you think eight million dollars of impact is going on in Shaw Heights right now?
No, sir, I don't think so.
How many meetings do you think you've attended over the last several months as you've worked to educate citizens about this bond package?
Uh, probably about forty.
About forty. And how would you describe that they've gone?
They, they have gone well. I mean, and you, you have, and I, and I tell this to, to Kristoff all the time, in those meetings, and, and they've been diverse groups of people. Um, the largest number of, if you have ten people, you're gonna have eight of those people who see the tremendous value in this. And one of the things that, that we try to stress talking to them is that we're, we're not asking for an enormous amount of projects. We're asking to fill gaps, as well as still have those things that, where these facilities create economic impact and generate revenue to sort of support themselves. I have had, uh, good results. Um, you, you always have one or two people who, who don't see value in it, but the majority of the groups that we've gone to, the, overwhelmingly have seen value in the plan that we've put forward, and they see a necessity, um, for this community, um, with these projects.
And just in looking at the schedule that you're projecting, I know you see some of the facilities being built earlier than, than others. When, uh, and I, as I recall, the, um, Aquatic Center and Senior Center?
Yes, sir.
Haven't gotten any attention tonight, but those facility, that facility would actually be one of the earliest ones built?
Yes, sir.
So when would you envision in the calendar that you kinda see it? It all has to be done within seven years, is that correct? So in that seven-year cycle, when would you anticipate that we would be able to build the sports and tennis complex in the Shaw Heights area?
Well, it, depending on, on, on land acquisition, um, I would think probably in the fourth year of the, the bond, uh, good Lord willing passing, that I, that's when you would probably see it, because you, you would have to do some, some, some more planning, some changes.
And Mr. Voorhees, uh, based on that schedule, could you speak to your comfort level that the city would be in a position to acquire the land, uh, before the construction period?
That sounds reasonable, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson, let me ask this question, uh, I think Mr. Art spoke on this, and that's a picture we'd love to paint for people. The greenway connectivity and other component part of the Parks and Rec that unfortunately really didn't get kinda all the attention that it should. But help us, if you could, in as few words as possible, kinda paint that picture of how our greenways are connecting with the other work that we're doing with Linear Park and, and River Trail and, and, um, the other work that we're doing up towards Fort Bragg, just so people can see how this park fits in.
One, one of the, one of the things that, that, that we're doing is working with FAMPA. Um, and we have a master's greenway plan. Uh, and one of them is the Little Cross Creek Greenway, as well as the, uh, the Big Cross Creek Greenway, uh, running up through the lake system, coming up from Mazarck Park and running all the way up to Fort Bragg. That would be part of our, our bond package to have monies leveraged to, for federal and state monies, and we would connect that walkable community. And that's one of the things that the citizens seem real interested in, that, uh, we have that walkable community, um, in this plan.
And then as you look at the other cities in North Carolina, the other major cities that we compete with for economic development and, and other issues, and I know y'all surveyed these, and I think you shared these with council as well, how many pools do they have?
Oh, the, uh, Greensboro has about nine pools. Uh, two of them, two of them indoor. Uh, Wade County just opened up another indoor pool, and they have about ten to twelve pools, uh, indoor and outdoor. And, uh, I, I don't know the number with Charlotte, but they're large. Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Greensboro has a nice indoor facility.
You think we deserve as much as they do, just in a?
I would think that, uh, this community, um, would, deserves to compete against those other communities.
And then in, in looking at tonight's agenda item, item six point eight, resolution introducing bond order, authorizing forty-five million Parks and Rec bond, setting the public hearing thereon and other related matters, the real purpose of this agenda tonight, which was on the consent, is to do what?
Is to set a public hearing.
Set a public hearing for November the twenty-sixth, which, what would happen then?
Uh, the people would be able to come out and voice their opinion.
Or con?
Exactly.
Give us the opportunity to hear from them?
Exactly. And then, um, council would vote.
And I don't know if you recall, but about a month ago, we had an opportunity to discuss a sister-city relationship. Do you, were you here with that night, Ben, or Chad?
I might not have been here that night, sir.
Well, okay. You might recall that there was one citizen that had sent an email and requested a public hearing, and this body elected, uh, to have a public hearing to discuss sister cities. We should have to listen to everybody. That's what public hearings are for. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move now to Ms. Davie.
Mr. Gibson?
I'm staying ready.
Um, I just wanna know if you could, um, kind of explain a little bit for our listening audience how easy it is for them to have staff come out, if it's an organization, if it's a church group, they have something at their club that they're part of, to get the full explanation, um, of the Parks and Rec bond?
All, all they need to do is either call the, uh, main office at Parks and Recreation at, uh, four three three, uh, one five four seven, or they can call, uh, up in the city manager's office to Caitlin Rinner at four three three, fourteen fifty-one. And, and all they need to do is just let us know a date and a time. And we'll be, we're doing, uh, we're setting up community meetings right now at libraries and rec centers where people can just come out, uh, and, and just talk about it, and we'll be there to do presentations from six to nine. But if they have a special group that they want us to come talk to, we'd be more than happy to do that. Just call those two numbers, we'll set it up Saturdays, we've been out on Sundays all through the weeks in the mornings, whatever is convenient for those groups to meet. Be glad to do that.
Very accessible.
Very accessible.
Online, you can, you can talk to staff one-on-one. And you know, as, as you talk about, you've been to forty meetings, and, um, you know, as, as I'm out in the community too, um, I actually was approached by this, um, lady who has a daughter that did an All-Star volleyball, um, tournament. She had to go all the way to Charlotte, she had to leave at four in the morning to get to Charlotte. And I know you hear those stories all the time about traveling parents that have to go, you know, burden the expense to go to these larger areas that can, um, facilitate this matter. What do you think that this development here in Fayetteville can help, um, you know, these parents and these kids that are trying to get to these All-Star Games and?
Well, that's, that's, that's one of the things that we hear in the meetings when we go, when I go to them, um, is that, uh, we have a lot of parents in this community that have to travel to these other venues, the Charlottes, to Greensboro, to Winston-Salons, to Carrys, uh, to where they have these, these venues where these events are taking place. One of the things the, uh, the, the school system talks about all the time is when they have to take our swimming program, the high school swimming program, to Smithfield to do meets and to do competitions. We hear that a lot from the parents, and they miss a lot of the meets because, you know, they have to drive to another city, and that's just a local thing. So we hear that all the time, and, and these, uh, projects that we've proposed meets the needs of those parents and throughout our community.
And I'm glad you brought that about. And I'm glad you brought that up, swimming, because I spoke to another family that's Pine Forest, and they said they have to share with Smith Rec, and I know we talked about, we do have other pools in the community when we include Fort Bragg.
Right.
But as you talked about accessibility, majority of these Cumberland County schools, you know, are going to Smith Rec because they don't have the access to.
And their Fayetteville State and the Y are taking time, and our seniors are up at 4:00 in the morning over at Fayetteville State, so those are the kinds of things we hear from our groups about remedying those problems and filling in the gaps with this proposal.
Okay, one last thing, just to reinforce again, so this consent vote that we're taking tonight is not necessarily saying that we are for the Parks and Rec bond, but it's saying, as each council member, that we are for allowing, you know, the consist, their constituents the opportunity to move forward on that public hearing.
Just to come and voice their opinion, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the first go-round? Okay, Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with much of what my fellow council members have actually said, we're looking forward to a public hearing, but we want to make sure people have the facts when they come in and come before the public hearing, that's my whole position. And we talk about getting to these games, accessibility, okay? We're talking about driving out of town, I'm concerned about children in this community, really couldn't care less about people coming from out of town, I'm concerned about the children that I represent. I asked an e, I sent an email about a week or two ago, and I hope that it will be forthcoming in terms of having our children and our citizens get public transportation to these events. I represent children who don't have families that put them in cars to take them to Greensboro or anywhere else, they rely on public transportation. And Mr. Hewitt is doing an amazing job at expanding our bus routes, but there's a significant portion of our community that does not have access to public transportation. My question is, when we were developing or in the process of developing, will we have the opportunity of taking our public transit system and laying it over these facilities? For example, if we go way out where Bill Crisp lives, there is no bus, there's certain areas in my district that there is no bus. Are we working with transit to get the citizens that live in this community, their children, to these facilities?
Yes, ma'am, your request is being worked on right now, that overlay of the bus routes where the proposed sites are going to be?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
In the planning of it, because we rely so much on public transportation, we put so much money into that, was that not a thought earlier of how our own citizens can get to these facilities and not so much who's coming off of 295 or 95?
Yes, ma'am.
It is, okay.
If, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, when can we expect that overlay and let our citizens know?
We've gotten our IT department to send over, Mr. Hewitt, to send over the overlay, and then where we propose the sites to go, and right offhand, there's probably maybe one site that doesn't have a bus route that goes right by it.
Right by it.
That's, that's.
Shaw Heights have bus service right into?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Right into the?
Oh, I mean, yes.
Perfect.
Oh, yes.
Very good, very good.
That was a sort of a mandate that I was told needs to be taken care of, and there's only one site that I can think of that does not have with these new facilities that a child could not get on a bus and get to.
And my other concern in my email was, I thought about the pool that's going to be in?
Lake Rim Park.
Lake Rim Park, and I've driven that route, I can't say that I've walked that route.
Right.
But it's not a safe route, there are no sidewalks.
No, ma'am.
How are kids in those neighborhoods, there's apartment complexes there, it's speeding streets, and we're putting a facility that is not walkable, how are we considering perhaps extending sidewalks to grant access?
Oh, I don't know about that now, I can make sure we have a conversation with the engineer and the infrastructure to see. I know we're working on a safe routes to school grant for sidewalks, I don't know exactly where all of those sidewalks are at. What I do know is that Lake Rim Park is a very popular park for that community.
Very, it is very popular.
It is tremendously used, so we want to make sure that we don't put the parents that are in that community in another situation where it would be inaccessible, which they have found, Lake Rim is found to be an accessible area.
And I think as we've done throughout our city, that we look for a walkable, livable community. So if we have a swimming pool, I would hope that whatever route our kids walk there is not in the street, because we don't have sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's all I have, thank you, sir.
Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to pass the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million Parks and Recreation bonds designated the chief financial officer to make and file the sworn statement of debt within the city clerk, directing the city clerk to present that statement and schedule the public hearing on the bond order for November 26, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, and direct the city clerk to publish the bond order in the Federal Observer not later than six days before the public hearing.
I'd like to offer substitute motion.
Okay.
I move that we delay the scheduling of the Parks and Recreation Bond Order authorizing $45,000 and setting the public hearing until such time that the community can be educated about the projects, that we have more realistic expectations of where these projects will go, and that we have a clear outline of our community outreach for communicating with our citizens.
Mayor, I'm sorry, did we have a second to Mr. Hurst's motion? I'm sorry, we have a second, Ms. Davy, yes, ma'am. Okay. Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor, we have a valid initial motion and a substitute. Okay, ma'am, we'll go back to the original motion, lack a second for the substitute? Do anybody? There's a second. There wasn't a second. Councilmember Hare? Sure vote. Okay, we have a second, read that again, Ms. Applewhite.
Well, authorizing the 45 million, I wish it was 45,000. Resolution introducing the, delay the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million Parks and Recreation bond and setting the public hearing until such time that the community can be better educated about the projects and their locations, and to such time that the city establishes a very clear and distinct outreach, public outreach for educating our citizens.
I have a motion and an appropriate second, questions, discussion on the motion? I have some, if I could bring Mr. Gibson up, please. I'm sorry, let me start with Kristoff, if you don't mind. Better educated, will you describe the education efforts that have gone on, including the 40-plus meetings, and how many more are scheduled over the next several weeks in terms of educating citizens about what's included in the bond package?
Well, today I actually reviewed the public forum settings that Michael discussed earlier, and I think we have a total of 12, 12 public forums scheduled in the next three months, and then we have other meetings, I'm aware of at least six other community meetings that are scheduled in the next month, and we respond to requests, so I expect that number to grow, those are just the ones I'm aware of in the next three weeks. So those are the community meetings, and as I said, Michael's already gone 40, I know I've done a couple others in addition to the ones he's done as well, so we'll continue to respond to those. We've also done some things I forgot to mention earlier, we do have planned, of course, media buys, not only on TV, but also billboards, radio, newspaper, and other print media as well, and as I said, we've velted materials that are available on our website, and et cetera.
And then in terms of the locations, how many of the facilities that are planned in the Parks and Rec bond have been cited and located? Mr. Gibson might know?
All but two.
Okay, and one of those is, we're just waiting to some conversation with the school board, is that correct?
One of those are waiting for a conversation with the school board.
Confirmation, really, with them, I believe, right?
I believe that's correct, we have actually had some conversations with their administrative staff, but we want to make sure we get that to the appropriate level in the organization before we publicly announce that.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from anyone? I'm sorry, Mr. Fowler, I missed your light, I'm sorry for your.
Yeah, I didn't hit the light on, I was just curious, if there is a delay, what would that do with, a delay at this point for the hearing, setting the public hearing, what would that do with the timing of the vote?
If council fails to set a public hearing tonight, then we would not be able to make the February 26 ballot measure, the ballot, the February 26 date. This is the last opportunity to move this on to a public hearing and actually put it before the public this spring.
So just to make sure, I want to make sure, come back up here, I want to make sure that we hear that one more time, because I'm a little hard of hearing tonight. If we don't vote tonight to set a public hearing for two weeks from last night, to listen to citizens on this issue, and let them bring up their own issue about whether they've been better educated, or the locations haven't been identified, or the outreach programs are there, if we don't do that, that effectively kills the Parks and Rec bond for the February 26 ballot.
That's correct.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
It's not the end of the deal, there's nothing magical about February, we could move it to November and save $100,000, so it doesn't kill the whole deal, it just slows it down to be more thorough, is that correct? If we did not set this, and we did not vote on it in February, could we still proceed with this bond at a later date?
Sure.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
And Mr. Bauer, do you know this year in the election cycle we're in, did anyone run for city council this year?
No.
Okay, so in the kind of non-political environment that we find ourselves in right now, and we have this much difficulty making a decision, it's difficult to envision that in a political environment next year where everyone is running for office, this would ever stand the test of time. So we have a motion, that's all I want to ask you, we have a motion and appropriate second, we just need to call this really what this is.
We should.
This is blatant politics to stop citizens from having the opportunity to vote, to even be heard two weeks from tonight, that's what this is, and that's what this vote will do, it will stop, you're out of order, ma'am, I'm speaking right now, you had the opportunity and I'm speaking right now.
Councilmember Hurst was speaking.
We're out of order. We have the opportunity, let's just call this what it is, this is an effort just to completely stop the program, and if council wants to do that, it's the collective will of these 10 people to do it, but let's just call it for what it really is. We're not allowing citizens to express their opinion two weeks from now, we're going to kind of circumvent that process because we know better. Lots of councils have had the opportunity in our community to address Parks and Rec. This Parks and Rec bond package is eight years in the making, these problems didn't appear yesterday, eight years in the making. Shaw Heights has been there forever, council may, councils before this one had had the opportunity to stand up and do what is right, they have opted for a lot of different reasons not to do it, all of them weren't given the opportunity, we have the opportunity, this vote tonight, right now, can kill that whole deal. So let's just call this for exactly what it is, and when you get ready to take this vote, it's more about just in setting a public hearing, it's about deciding if this city is really going to be better or not, that's what it's all about. Ms. Applewhite?
I'm done.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment, if I could.
Yes, sir.
I can't speak for the rest of council as far as to a decision that I make to vote, but I do not make my decisions on pure politics, I make them off the principles that I stand for and what I told for my citizens. I have heard from many of my constituents, I have been to community watch meetings, I have discussed the Parks and Recreation situation with many people in my district, and I've heard from people outside my district. Any vote that I give is based off the principles that I stand for and what I've heard from the constituents to whom I have spoken already. It is not to preclude anybody from being able to say, everybody in this city knows what my cell phone number is, and can call me and have called me, so I cannot, like I said, I can't speak for the other members of council, but I can speak for myself on that, thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Applewhite, would you restate that again, just so we won't be confused, and then we'll take a vote, that'll be okay.
Your eye is clear on it. I move to delay item 6.8, the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million Parks and Recreation bond and setting the public hearing thereon and other related matters until the citizens of this community are better informed about the details of this, and until our staff provides a greater outreach to the citizens of this community before a public hearing is held.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let me ask for your vote, please. That motion fails, those in favor, Mr. Crisp, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, in opposition, Mr. Bates, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, and Mr. Fowler. We're back now to the original substitute motion, the original motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Hurst, will you read that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Move to pass the resolution introducing the bond order authorizing $45 million Parks and Recreation bonds designated the chief financial officer to make and file the sworn statement of debt within the city clerk, with the city clerk, directing the city clerk to present that statement, schedule the public hearing on the bond order for November 26, 2012, at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers, and to direct the city clerk to publish the bond order in the Federal Observer not later than six days before the public hearing.
Thank you, sir, let me ask for your vote on that motion, please. That motion fails, those in favor, Mr. Hurst, Mr. Shivani, Mr. Art, Ms. Davy, in opposition, Mr. Crisp, Mr. Bates, Ms. Applewhite, Mr. Hare, Mr. Massey, Mr. Fowler. What's next, anybody have another motion? Okay, we'll move now to item 7.1, we'll begin our tonight's public hearing.